Making fluid and we're trying to, as you saw in the meeting, we continue to look at the budget, reduce where we can reduce and encourage, you know, the way we can continue business so we can reopen and go to school and go to church and do the things we've been doing. 2020 budget is, we're in the midst of that. I think this afternoon, we're, the workshop is for the non-departmentals. Again, the biggest parts of those that will be, and we'll go into that, you know, at three o'clock show, we'll look at that. But, you know, it's fluid and I'm sure there'll be a couple of iterations where the whole picture will be coming into focus and, you know, our accounting and our different directors have been calculating and recalculating and figuring out where we can go when October 1 comes along. And that pretty much concludes my report. Is that not right, Mike? Okay, very good. That's it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. We'll move on. City Council reports. Councilman Tisdale?
Yes. Do we have an update on where we are on the homeless issue right now?
No, we don't.
Okay. Anything new on the Wellness Roadshow for health insurance?
As a reminder, as a reminder, we wanted to put people into a wellness program in the city. We were going to roll that out and instead we rolled out COVID. There really isn't time in this remaining fiscal year
Two months.
to roll out that program and have it impact us. We need to start again next year. The whole, the whole approach to the wellness program was to eventually move our employees into two tiers. One tier that was in the wellness program and another tier that was not in the wellness program and have different rates of insurance for them. A lot of companies are doing that to reward people for being in a wellness program, but there's not time to get around this fiscal year and, and impact. So, so we, and quite frankly, Blue Cross Blue Shield is not real thrilled about going around to all our offices right now. Sure. Still, there's still, it's still an objective of ours. We're just going to roll it, have to roll it back to next year.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Leonard. Ms. Labata, the city engineer, could you give me an update up here in front of the mic and the camera and your adoring public? Could you give me an update on the Churchill Avenue ditch? I know we were looking at design, how far we are along on that matter.
We're about probably 60% through design on that project. We did have to kind of take a step back and fix the point, the failure that was in the gas easement that you know about.
Right.
And as you know, we, I had you take some good videos of this heavy rainfall over the weekend for me since you live close by and kind of looked at how it was performing. It's still performing pretty well. Was kind of, I was pretty impressed with all the rain we had, that it did not overflow the banks like it did the last time.
No, it did a good job of drainage.
Yeah. So, it's about 60% through and, and we're, we're
Okay.
slowly marking away.
We're still moving forward on that. Okay. Thank you, ma'am. That's all I have, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Tisdale. Councilman Glavin?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a few things and I just want to put one thing on the radar going forward, but the first thing I need to, is there any update on the lighting issue on Kimbrough? I know we, we had contacted Mississippi Power erroneously and it was supposed to be Coast Electric, but has, have we contacted Coast Electric? Is there any chance of them getting that lighting at the end of that?
I was told that we were looking for another light at that corner.
Okay.
I was told that they were, they were, that it was, a service request was done. I'll, I'll follow up on that and I'll email you tonight.
All right. Thank you for that. And then, not for this meeting, but I'd just like to put it on Director Labata's radar. If, and I know we bounced this back with the supervisors a little bit, specifically Supervisor Rocco, but is there anything we can do at Waters, Waters View? If we can look at that and just, just kind of look at all the facts and the options and if I can get an update at our next scheduled meeting? Did she walk out of the room? Where'd she go? Oh, there she is. I don't need an update today. I just, I'd like for you to gather as much facts as you can and, and just lay it out there on the table, what our options are or are not for that. And then I know I spoke to the administration about dredging. I just want to confirm that is in the hopper for them to assess, to see if we can do anything on the, on Holly Bluff?
Yeah, I got an email from him today, Councilman, and you probably saw the same email I did. He's, he's acknowledging the fact that it's a private boat lift and not a city boat lift, so I guess he's acknowledging the fact that we don't have a responsibility to dredge there. He's also acknowledged that it's really just a whole bunch of sand and debris that's right up around their pier. I, I, I'm real nervous about us going in there and doing work on a private boat ramp, but I
And I do agree with that. I think the question was, was the debt, we were going to confirm the debt
And we've asked, we've asked, see more engineering confirm that their data is right, that there's still four and a half feet of water once you get past where the boat lift is.
I got an ore, I could go out there and sound that deep, but no, I'm, I'm all seriously, just, just kind of want to bring some closure to that.
Yeah, I, I haven't said no to the gentleman yet, but I, I gotta, my gut, my gut tells me it's not our business.
And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Glavin. Councilman Guines?
Yes. I wanted to first announce Saturday. Saturday, we have the school backpack giveaway. I know that school is, with the COVID-19, some people are worried about bringing, bringing their kids back to school, but nevertheless, nevertheless, we still have to prepare our kids. And thank you, I want to thank Dr. Tisdale for giving a donation. For all those who are in the audience who want to make a donation, we're giving away backpacks that will already be packed from first through eighth graders. We're giving away about 400 backpacks that will be given out Saturday at Henry Beck Park. And you can make the check out to the second liners. Speaking of school and backpacks and going back to school, we want to, the COVID-19 testing was canceled. We're working now, trying to get the testing brought back to our community. I personally, in my family, there's been four members tested positive for COVID-19. My nephew, who has been, been hit pretty hard with it, he was down probably a week, a good solid week. It's no joke. And in speaking about COVID-19, we need to seriously, seriously consider enforcing masks, enforcing masks in buildings. Every business we have in Biloxi, people are not adhering to it. We need to really look at the possibility of having some monitors out there so we can start pushing. This is serious. You know, one of my sisters took my mother to get tested. My mother's 89 and she tested positive, my mother tested negative. So that's how close. And an 89-year-old catching COVID-19, it's not a good combination at all. So I highly encourage us to look at maybe other options such as curfews, scaling back things, things like that. COVID-19 also has some other implications. I consider it civil unrest where a lot of our kids don't have a lot to do and they're out there late hours of the night just wondering. So we may need to look at curfew hours, age limit, maybe making a few changes here and there to protect our kids because there is a lot going on and kids don't have a lot to do at this time. So those are some things that I wanted to kind of address to make sure that we understand the seriousness of this, wearing our masks, the seriousness of these businesses, walking into a business and nobody have a mask on at all, that's very serious. And like I said, four, four out of my family members are affected right now and they're under quarantine and one had it very, very rough. So it's here. One of the church members of one of the local churches just passed away yesterday from it. So COVID-19 is here, it's not going anywhere until we do something about it. And as the leaders, we may need to kind of look at other options. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilman Guines. Councilman Lawrence?
Yeah, a couple of things. Let us know everybody's mics working. Everybody calling to watch this stuff on TV says half the mics don't work until Nikki went around and turned them all on, so half the meeting last week wasn't recorded. So we got to make sure the mics are working to start the meetings. I think I heard everybody, sort of sounded like everybody's in pretty good shape today. Second thing, I'd like to have an update on anything happening with the Broadwater. I thought they were supposed to be announcing something at the end of this month. Is there something going on with that?
I think there's
They have it, give you a date when they're going to release all that information?
I mean, answer.
Yeah.
We will hopefully be there by the end of this month. That's what we're told about two weeks ago.
Now, that's going to be big news, Biloxi and them two other places across the world, you know, that's pretty exciting news.
I think
For the city of Biloxi.
The group in California is crafting, as I had mentioned, the announcement of the three projects and so we're hopeful that that happens very shortly.
The last thing is, we've got these old pipes that put in the ground, 1941 busted yesterday, shut down five or six businesses. We got to make sure these things are replaced. Not going to public work was on it, they worked all day long, had it all done by the end of the night. The fact that you lose the half shell, the ventures, Fugees, milk shot, patio 44, that's a lot of businesses to shut down, that one string of pipes right there. So it's something we got to say on top. I know we, it's like Mike Lynn said, we, we repairing and fixing up, but we're not getting ahead. We need to make sure those brand-new pipes put in the ground where we run the rest of the sewer and water for this part of town, even if it's not covered. We need to make sure new pipes connected under the ground.
Well, I think the worst
I mean, it's huge to shut down that many businesses that quick. Unbelievable.
Well, it's, it's huge that they were able to get it back together that quick and this is another occasion where you can look down Main Street and just see somebody's head over the top of it. They were up to their shoulders and this is not the first time, you know, our crew and Billy Ray's, uh, uh, crew has accomplished something that was pretty amazing. But again, the age of the things that are under the ground, you know, he's going to catch up with us and it's catching up with us. And they, but they, amazingly, I think about four o'clock this happened yesterday. And, you know, we're appreciative of the reaction and what it took to, to do that stuff, but you know, it'll happen again, just like the bridge. It'll happen again till we get it all, all replaced.
We are lucky that we've got a FEMA project that's in, that's replacing a lot of 100-year-old infrastructure in East Biloxi. Not all of it, obviously, but that's, that's a start. West Biloxi's a mess. The infrastructure underneath the ground in West Biloxi is a mess. It's, it'll now be the oldest in the city and we've got a lot of asbestos pipe and other issues out there that we need to get ahead of us. But we're truly in a situation which in the maintenance world was referred to as breakdown maintenance. We're fixing things as it breaks, but we're not getting ahead of it.
I just, I thought it was tough. We have enough things going on in the city and that happened yesterday, shut down five more businesses, but thank you, the public work got on top of it and they fixed it pretty quick. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Councilwoman Newman, your report? Your report? I don't have a report this afternoon, however, Felix, if you would, text me the second liners information. My, we, my firm issued checks on Thursday, so you'll have it Friday. That may be too late. We're definitely going to send you some money though, help you offset some of the costs for that program.
Thank you.
No problem. We will move forward to public agenda, citizens' comments. We have 45 minutes for citizens' comments, three minutes per person. I'm going to start with the left-hand side of the room, my left-hand side, your right-hand side. If there's anybody on the right-hand side of the room that would care to come up and speak, please come forward, state your name for the record and sign in for me. Is there anybody on the left-hand side of the room or my right-hand side of the room that would care to speak? Again, if you care to speak, just come forward and state your name and address for the record and sign in for me. Is there anyone in the back of the room? There being none, we will conclude citizens' comments and move to the policy agenda.
We still just do the that's typically under the mayor's report and the departmental reports.
Did Oscar Wenda provide us a video or an update?
They're not here.
They are not here, so no, to answer your question.
Me and Felix always worried about that.
They always a no-show.
So we will move forward to the policy agenda. So Lucy, will you read ordinance A?
Ordinance to amend section 9122 pertaining to garbage collection fees.
This was originally motioned by Lawrence Tisdale, the same team that motions, all of them?
This is a new one.
Oh, sorry, this first reading. Well, I'll let George and Lawrence have the opportunity to motion this one. Do I have a motion?
Come on, Dr. Tisdale.
Peer pressure.
Yeah, I'll say you have a motion.
There's a motion by, there's a motion by Lawrence. Do we have a second?
I'll talk to him.
Seconded by George Lawrence. This is the first reading, so we'll move to ordinance B.
Ordinance amending sections of the code pertaining to water and sewer rights.
Do I have a motion?
I moved that last night.
This is the first reading.
B.
This is the first reading on B.
B.
Yes. Motion?
Mm-hmm.
Motion by George Lawrence? Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Kenny with the quick guns. Do I have a second by Kenny Glavin, shaking things up around here? This will move us to ordinance C, which is the second reading, originally moved by George Lawrence and seconded by Paul Tisdale. Ms. Lucy?
Ordinance to amend the Biloxi LDO pertaining to standards and requirements for fences and appearance.
Mr. Lawrence, being that you moved it, you have the floor.
Yeah, I really was, I really don't like this. I think we should leave this alone because the good-looking side of the fence is what everybody sees that passes all these neighborhoods. If the guy wants to do something to the backside of his fence and fix it himself, that's up to him. But all having the pretty side facing the streets and other thing that everybody looks at, I don't think we should turn around and just show the extended boards and that on the backside. So I'm really not for changing anything with this fence. That's, that's all it is, is flopping aside.
Mr. Tisdale, you have the floor.
Test. There you go. I, I'm with George on this. I think currently, I mean, I understand that we want neighborhoods to be beautified in this respect, but on the other hand, if I'm putting up a fence and I want to look at the nice side since I'm paying for it, I should be able to do that. And what's the old saying, good fences make good neighbors, I think, and quite often, we've had a couple of fence issues before us, so like I say, I, I see no reason to change at this time. So I agree with Mr. Lawrence. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tisdale. And I'll tell you, when you started that and you turned your mic on, you said test? I got nervous for a moment. For those that don't know, his background is in education. Mr. Creel, would you, before I go around to the rest of the council, would you just give us an, an abridged version of what we're doing here?
Yeah, based on what I just heard, I think there may be some confusion about what this is. Both the staff and the land development ordinance, what we try to do is to encourage good neighbor fences, fences that look the same on both sides. The, what the ordinance says though, is that if I'm putting up a fence in my backyard and there's a framing side on one side and there's a finny side, I have to turn the finny side to my neighbor's property, even though I'm the one that's paying for the fence. You can imagine the surprise that we've had with people when they come in to pull a permit to put a new fence up and we tell them you have to turn the finny side to the outside. They, well, wait a minute, I'm, I'm the one that's got the burden of this investment. I'm paying for it, you know? I'm actually saving my neighbor the, the money for having to put up the frame for a fence, so I should at least have the choice. And, and what this new ordinance would do, if it's changed, it would give the person paying for the fence the choice of whether or not to turn the finny side to the inside or to continue to turn it to the outside. We believe there'd be some that might still turn it to the outside just to be a good neighbor. Now, this would only affect fences between two neighbors. The fences that face the city right-of-way, whether front or rear, would have to turn the finny side facing the right-of-way. And, you know, I gave some examples of Pops Ferry, for example, where when you cross the bridge, you've got a number of fences there where the framing side is actually facing the street. And then right across the street, you've got a new fence that was put up where the finny side is facing the street and, you know, the one where the finny side is much more attractive. But this would also solve a, a couple of other issues that, that could become contentious. If I put the finny side, if I choose to put the finny side on my neighbor's part of the property, first of all, I'm going to have to, either me or my contractor's going to have to go onto the neighbor's property to put the finished pieces in place. Not only that, down the road, if, if I have to maintain that fence or if I decide to paint it, I'm going to have to go back onto my neighbor's property to repair it, repaint it, replace it, whatever. So what this would do is make sure that all the activity about the fence is actually going on on my property if I'm the one that's pulling the permit. So it seemed to be one of those things that made sense. We were going through the LDO and we compared that with the number of complaints that we received from people who are actually paying to have new fences built and felt that we would at least put it in as an option that the owner would have the choice as to whether or not to turn the finny side to his side or turn it to the neighbor.
So if I have, for example, my backyard and I have the finished side of the fence between my neighbor and I facing me, I could have it face my neighbor if I wanted to, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. My back fence is on the property line and behind my back fence is a street. Now, the finished side of that portion of the fence faces me because that's the side I wanted to look at. This would change that, correct? That part of the ordinance because it says that if it faces a public street, then that's where the finished side has, has to be placed. So if I were to put my fence up next year, I'm right now looking currently at a pretty finished back fence, but if I replaced it, then the finished side would have to face the street.
That's correct.
Correct.
If there's a change to it.
Right, but on, but on the sides, if I have, whatever I want to do is fine since I'm paying for it. So it's just whatever faces a public street.
Yes, sir. And if you'll think about it, in most neighborhoods, for example, where there is a privacy fence that has one unfinished side and it is going around the yard, they usually turn the front side to the street, the, the front side of the fence facing the street, to the street. Usually this is only an issue when the property has what we call double frontage, where you, the front of your house faces one street and the back of your house faces another street. So that would, that would be the only issue and the owner would always have the right to, to finish both sides of it if he, if he chooses to. But if we make this change in the ordinance, we'd say that anything facing the street would have to be the finished side.
Thank, thank you for that clarification, Mr. Creel. I'm still not in favor of this, but thank you for the explanation. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilwoman Newman, any discussion? Councilman Glavin?
Well, geez, here's a novel idea. What if the, we make it where if your fence faces the neighbor, it has to have a finished side facing the neighbor?
That's what's in the ordinance right now.
All right, so
Yes.
And we want to take that out?
No, what we're doing, we're, we're not forcing anything on anyone. What we're doing is giving the choice to the person that's paying for the fence. If, if it's my yard and I'm paying for the fence, I have the choice as to whether or not to put the finny side either on the inside or on the outside. Now, what we, again, what we try to encourage is a double-sided fence, you know, where it looks the same on both sides, but
Yeah, I'm, I'm with Councilman Tisdale and Councilman Lawrence. I mean, why, if it's that way now and, and the neighbor has the benefit of a nice-looking fence if someone puts it up, why would we change it to give the owner an option to put a crappy-looking side, you know, facing the neighbor?
Well, a lot of people entertain in their backyards and they want to have a nice-looking fence in their
So double-sided.
In their backyard.
So double-sided.
And they would have the option of doing that. They have the option of doing that anytime to do a double-sided fence.
But you're telling me that, that if we change this ordinance, then they, they can put the crappy side on their neighbor's side?
Yes, and it's not always a crappy side.
I'm probably not using the right word. You probably got a better word for it, unfinished or whatever you want to call it.
There are fences and there are fences and there are some that do the framing the right way and, and it actually looks neat and organized. And then there are some fences where the, the framing side may not be, be done the way that we'd like to have it next to us.
Got you.
But all this would do is, is give the owner that's paying for the fence the choice.
Okay.
Councilman Guines?
I'm going to put a fence right here.
Yeah, the front and back, and that means that the, and I guess you used the crappy side and the good side. The good side would face the roadway all, all, always, right?
Yes, that's right.
And that's what this ordinance is talking
Under this change, yes, sir.
Right, but as it stands now, you can turn it either way, on the front?
No, actually, actually, the, the way it is now is it, you turn the good side to your neighbor, whoever that happens to be.
Okay, I'm speaking of the front, just the front?
Mm-hmm.
The front side. This is the front of the house.
That's right.
Good side have to be facing toward the street as it stands now.
Yes. Whether, whether your neighbor is a private property or whether it's the city right-of-way, the finny side
It right-of-way.
is supposed to be turned out right now into the ordinance.
Okay, so the city right-of-way, it has to face forward.
Yes.
Correct, okay. That's, yeah.
Okay, thank you. So to understand correctly, the ordinance as it stands now is all sides of the fence face out regardless of what they face.
On this type of a fence, yes.
The ordinance is only going to change those portions of the parcel that are adjacent to other private property owners.
That's correct.
That's it. So any, any, any line of this parcel that's adjoining to a private party, they have the, the, the person that pays for the fence has the discretion of which way to face the fence. Now, anecdotally, I know this is just anecdotally, but I was facing the same situation and my neighbor held me hostage because we built it faced out. It was the house that was built before I was there, so it was built faced out, but it was dilapidated and old and I could not and was not allowed to go on my neighbor's property to repair the fence. They complained about how bad the fence was, but they would not allow me on their property or our contractor on their property to fix the fence. Could not do it, would not do it, was threatened with trespass if we did. Of course, they threatened to call the code office and all that stuff if we didn't repair it. So what we ended up having to do is building platforms on our property and having contractors tie to the things, hang over the fence and repair it that way. They allowed us to do that, which I still think we did trespass on their property in certain respects to do it, but they allowed us to get away with that. This allows us to allow the person that is responsible for, for the fence to have constant access to the fence.
That's correct.
And I think that's a very important part to think about when we do this. When it's facing an easement or a roadway, you always have access to that. So if the fence has problems, you can enter that public space, but when we require somebody to build something for the benefit of the neighbor, this code does not provide us access to repair what we've provided for the benefit of that neighbor.
That's correct.
We actually can create a hostile situation and that's why I'm in favor. I would, look, I'm a good neighbor and when I build a, when I build something, I take into account the people that are next to me. I absolutely do and I think most reasonable, prudent people do. The problem is when we get into a situation when these things pass down to the next owner, the next user, and those people don't have the same relationship that the priors had and, and we have to be cognizant of that situation. And I think it's responsible for us to tell people that you have the discretion to put yourself in that position or you have the discretion to build it facing you so you have the access and opportunity to repair it when something goes wrong. That'll end my comments. I support this because I think we need to give the homeowners the opportunity to have access to what they're required to build, especially if it's for the benefit of someone else and they don't have the access. We should be addressing that concern. Mr. Tisdale, I know you have retort, so I'll, I'll give you the floor.
Retorting now, chief. Uh, I would, I would offer an amendment to remove the proposed portion that reads, where it begins, "That fronts to or is otherwise exposed to a city street or right of way." Leaving the proposed, "Fences constructed between two private properties may display the finish side of the fence at the discretion of the property owner and submitting the building permit, submitting the building permit application." The only objection I have, I see your point, I don't have a problem with that. But I'm gonna sit, my particular situation is I have a front two streets, as Mr. Creel pointed out, and I think folks in that situation, since they're paying for the fence, should have the choice of what side of the fence they wanna look at. So anyway, I, I would offer that amendment at this time. If there's a second, we might consider it.
I'll second the amendment. Do we have, uh, discussion?
I don't know. I feel the same way, except I'm all about beautification as well, and I like the idea of the better-looking appearance side on the, on the street. Why couldn't we maybe encourage, not just encourage, but maybe even require double-sided on both sides?
That would be another version of an amendment that you'd be welcome to make.
I'm just saying, I mean, how much more is that? I don't wanna put a burden on anybody, but...
Well, usually on the front side, the, the financial burden wouldn't, probably would not be as much as on the backside if it were a solid fence running the width of the property. Usually fences on the side, you know, just run from the house out to the property line. So, but, but you could do that, yes.
Um...
I have another, I have another question. So, and I don't know what the descriptor is for this type of fence. I think I've heard it described as maybe a shadow box fence where you have alternate, um, uh, boards or whatever, one on one side, one on the other, so that, A, air circulates between them, both sides are finished, but the, the boards are not adjacent to each other. One faces one side, one faces the other.
That, uh, that's what we call a good neighbor fence, and that's what we try to encourage. But in some situations, people have dogs and they have the ability to get through that shadow box effect and get out of the yard, so...
Ooh, have to be some skinny dogs. Guinea cat, well, cats and possums manage. So anyway, uh, that's my motion. I think there's a second if we wanna care to discuss that further.
We'll continue discussion on the amendment. Councilman Lawrence, discussion on the amendment?
Well, it's all, the dude's the same thing to me. If the fence is rotten on either side, it doesn't matter. You still can't go in your, the other people's property calling them robbing and repair. So how you repair it if you got it inside out? That's just gonna rot, they'll blow the mixers in. So you got the same problem, so that, that is a mute point.
You take the board down, George. You just take the board down if it's on your side.
Yeah, but you can't nail it. How you gonna nail it? You can't.
You nail it, you nail it through the board into the frame.
So you still gotta, you know? That's, that's a mute point to me, that repairing the fence, you gotta repair.
I'm not sure you understand the physics of nails. They go, they go in the board into the frame, so if the board's on your side, the frame, it goes in the board.
You hook it into the frame, you don't go through the frame, you come to the other side and nail it to the frame.
That's what I'm saying, so if the board's on yours...
It backwards.
No, you've got it backwards.
No.
All right, George.
You're saying, repairing the, repairing the fence has nothing to do with anything.
I just wanna make sure if I'm gonna support anything, that the neighbor's side is protected. And, uh, that's, I think that's key. It's not fair for me to stick a fence here and I got a, my side on my side and he's gotta look at a unfinished crappy side of the fence. It's just not fair.
We could spend the money and put a fence up also. I mean, it, it's not fair to tell the other person that what he can or can't do on his own property. We leave no fence around, one of the two parties, if, if there wants to be a barrier between the two properties, the one person that pays should get the benefit of the, of the, of the money he's spending.
I got it, but we have the ability as a council to affect ordinances that beautify our city, and, uh, this is one opportunity that we have. It just is, so...
I'm kind of like, and I agree with you a little bit, Kenny. Um, yeah, you wanna protect your neighbor's side, but then on the flip side, if your neighbor don't allow you to go over there to do any repairs, then you're stuck like Chuck, so, you know, how are we gonna get over there and protect, I mean, go and do any repairs? So I'm kinda like Robert, I, I would, uh, have to support this ordinance because it'll allow you to be able to make the repairs, because eventually if you put something up, you're gonna have to repair it.
We still have an amendment on the table. I'd like to call for the question of the amendment. The amendment was to strike the language that fronts or is otherwise exposed to a city street or right of way, leaving the fences constructed between two parties, party prop- or private properties may display the finish side of the fence at the discretion of the property owner submitting the building permit application. Mr. Creel?
We, if we, if we remove that section, then essentially what it's gonna say is that the owner will have the choice of putting the finish side or the...
Correct.
Or framing side anywhere on the property, front or back, so...
Correct. It gives the, it gives the, the person paying for the fence the right or the discretion to put whichever they want. So I'll take call for the question on the amendment. All in favor of the amendment?
I wanna be, wanna be sure that I understand this correctly. The only part that I want to see removed from what's proposed is just, quote, "That fronts to or is otherwise exposed to a city street or right of way."
Correct, that is what the amendment is. And the effect of that amendment essentially gives the person applying for the permit and paying for the fence the discretion to face it whichever way he wants on any side of his property. If that, is that your intent of the?
It's my intent.
I call for the question. All in favor of the emotion, of the, um, motion to amend? All against? Motion fails four to two. Those in favor were Tisdale and Deming, those against were everyone else. Um, Glavin, Gines, Newman, and, uh, Lawrence. This returns us back to the original ordinance, or the ordinance as written. I call for the question on the ordinance as written. Those in favor, please signal with the raise of your hand. Those against? The motion fails for lack of a majority. Those four were Gines, Deming, and Newman. Those against were Glavin, Tisdale, and Lawrence. I got it, I was zoomed in, so I didn't have a back button, I had to zoom out. I'm good, I got it.
You got it?
Yeah.
I know.
All right.
Or who else? Who else? That's it?
So move to the con-
That's it?
Move to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion on the consent agenda?
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion by Tisdale. Do I have a second on the consent agenda?
Second.
A second by George Lawrence. Mr. Tisdale, I recognize you.
Not a single question, Mr. President, not one.
Not one?
Not one.
I'm gonna hold you to that. Councilman Lawrence?
Yeah, uh, Mike, Resolution A. Again, uh, at first I was kinda confused, you said something about this is actually not on Keesler. This is on our side of the fence, on Churchill.
Correct.
That's, that's an appropriate question. The way the reading, the way this reads, it says, "Emergency road repairs on Churchill Avenue," in parentheses, K A F B. It was on Churchill Avenue, and the reason that Keesler is mentioned, that abbreviation meaning Keesler Air Force Base, is that the reason for the work was the Keesler Air Force Base, the, the sinkhole was right next to their high-pressure gas line. So we, the reason that the repair was done is emergency be- was because of that gas line. We could leave those word, those four letters out and we'd be fine and the thing would read correctly. But the author of that resolution put that in because the fact that it was next to the Keesler gas line. It wasn't a repair to the Keesler gas line, though, thankfully. So if, if the council wants that to read clear, we could just say, make a change and relieve from parentheses, K A F B, parentheses could go out if you wanna do that. I'm not sure it adds anything other than it gives me a chance to explain it.
Do you have any, Mr. Lawrence? The floor recognizes you. Do you have any, do you have any response to what Mr. Leonard stated?
That's, I'm just trying to figure out what it was, what we're doing with that.
Do you wanna amend the lang- do you wanna amend the language to remove the K A F B?
Yep, you can do that. I'll do that, I'll make...
So Mr. Lawrence offers a motion to amend the language in Consent Resolution A to strike parentheses, K A F B, close parentheses from the resolution. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Paul Tisdale. Any discussion on the amendment? There being none, I'll call for the question. All in favor, please signal with the raise of your hand. Motion carries unanimously. We will vote on A as amended, along with the, with the rest of the consent agenda. Anything else?
Yeah. This, gee, we, we received is $270,000. Where'd that money come from? That goes to a street-wide project? Is there anything in the city we can repair that? What?
This is internet sales money that the state is passing down to the communities, counties and cities.
Sales tax.
Sales, sales tax. Um, so, uh, we get two increments of this tax. We got $174,000 earlier in the year, and we just got this last increment of 207,000. And we, what we've done, what we did with the first batch, uh, tranche, if you will, and what we're doing with this same money is dumping it into municipal paving. It's, it's restricted to paving and repairs, um, so that's the appropriate place to put it. We'll just apply it, we'll put it in that capital project and then apply it to keep pa- paving projects around the city. So that's a, that's a total of about $400,000 we got.
That, that's generated by, uh, delivery of internet-based sales to various places. But the algorithm is based on our population, not on delivery of goods by very, Amazon or whoever, to the, the different, uh, zip code, okay? But, so it's, it's our share that, uh, they say we were gonna get. Like sales tax.
But you created an account, there was any money in this account or just a brand-new account? You put 270,000 in it?
Yeah, we've only, this only happened twice, once for 170,000.
It's citywide, so any, anybody in any ward could...
No, it's designated for constru- against construction. You know, it's, it's for construction, the state has, has dedicated that, whatever they rebate you is, is towards, uh, the, you know, construction projects.
And, and the, the, the projects that we do from the municipal savings, municipal paving, capital project depends on, um, you know, requests from the council. It also depends on emergency repairs that we have to do. And it depends on our own, um, administrations' in, uh, analysis of streets, for ex- that, that need to be done. Give, give you an example, in Ward Three, we had two really horrible streets, Lewis Street and Savell was the other one, I think. Used to be Mc, Mc, the Mc Street, that the councilwoman, uh, pointed out to us, were in pretty bad shape. We went out, looked at them, we looked at the paving study that we did last year, they were both, those, they were, they were rated poor, and so we paved those streets. Those are, those are the kinds of things we're using them in those paving for. We're also using it to pave after there've been repairs. For example, the waterline great break out here, um, yesterday, when we're all done patching that pipe and everything else, there's sometimes there's emergency paving that has to be done to cover it up. That's what we would use it for. So we, we will have, we will have used, when that money is gone, we will have probably used a million dollars of, of capital, of, of, um, bond money plus the, the addition of this internet sales money, and, and we'll do that for paving around the city as it's necessary.
But that's ongoing, that's year after year after year.
Right, correct.
Thank you, Mike, George. Anything further?
I'll just first. That's, this is good there. That's good, thank you.
Okay, I didn't know if you had moved on.
Nope.
On B? Uh, just, uh, total amount to a small craft, all with a point cadet, $40,000? Is that what it actually cost us to repair that, or are we just putting $40,000 to try to get that, the damage from the hurricane?
Which one was it, Ms. Councilman?
That's a B.
B as in Bravo?
B like a bad.
B as in bad, okay, all right, Bravo. Um, that was the, that was the, what you're seeing there, that work has long been done right after Cristobal, we, we cleared all that out of the harbor. This is just the resolution authorizing us to have done it because it was done as an emergency. It was about, it was about 50,000, it was about 45,000, 50,000, I can't remember exactly. Oh, there it is, it's 40,000. It was 40,000, we paid a company to come in and clean all the debris out of the harbors. They, they, they were, did a super job, they came really quickly as soon as we asked them. We did it as an emergency purchase order, and this is just really getting that on the record.
I guess my question was, I know we had, uh, point cadet and you had the small craft, they were having trouble with the one on Lee Street in the back, there was no debris in there. This is strictly for the front two?
It was, I, I don't, I don't know, I don't know the answer to that.
Larry's not here, is he?
I think a majority of it was in our two major harbors, but they may have done some cleaning elsewhere. I'm, I'm not, I don't know, I'll find out for you.
All right. Thank you.
When I was at the Naval Academy, they told me there's only three appropriate answers to a question, yes, sir, no, sir, or I'll find out, sir. That one falls in the third category.
One question, Pete Abad? Uh, city attorney, are you still the city attorney?
Yes, sir.
Okay, just checking, just checking on.
You got your card?
Okay. Now, a question about the, the house on, uh, Howard Avenue, were you extending the, the date? It's supposed to run out July 31st of 2020. You extended it for how long?
Till September...
The 15,000, it, the three apartments.
We extended it, uh, I think 45 or 60 days out, cause it's, it's almost finished, but we don't, we don't think she's gonna make the...
She just couldn't, she couldn't get it by the July 31st.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I was just wondering how long you had to extend it, but it's all. Thank you, Robin.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate that.
Thank you, George. Anybody else in the council of discussion on the consent agenda? Councilman Glavin? Mr. Gines, Newman?
Excuse me, I just want clarification on five, just remove K A F B, like...
Correct, and the parentheses surrounding K A F B. My only concern that hasn't been addressed as of yet on the consent agenda would be with Mr. Tisdale's, um, resolution. I'm not opposed to it, I'm just curious if we have a design or an estimate yet for what it's gonna cost.
I think the, uh, last time that an estimate was received was when this was, when, when there was discussion at the meeting where we tabled, I think it was less than 300 bucks. I may have a copy here if you wanna...
I don't need that, that satisfies my...
I think it was 300 or 400 bucks, I think, for the materials. That did not include a door, and we're asking for a door.
No, it did include a door and it was less than 300.
Okay.
Okay, and we are doing in-house labor? Is that how we're handling this?
Uh, yes.
Mr., um, I guess...
Well, I understand. But thinking, I, I assume we could do it in-house.
Okay, well, that's all I had. Just wanted to know what the cost is gonna be. Interesting, Tisdale?
No, I said I wasn't gonna make a comment, I'm done. Thank you.
All right.
Yep, that's, but since you brought the topic up, uh, any idea when this might get done? It's a small item.
Um...
Can we get it done in 90 days?
Mr. Ray, would that be addressed to Mr. Ray? I'm sorry, Mr. Ray, I think with, this, uh, this item is to build a wall and the door separating the administration's functions on the bottom floor with the council's functions on the bottom floor. He, uh, Mr. Tisdale is inquiring on the timeframe in which we might be able to accomplish this task. 30 days? Sounds like a good, uh...
So, it could be done by the end of August, certainly by the end of the fiscal year. Outstanding.
There we go.
Thank you.
All right. Other than that, I have nothing else to discuss. Call for the question. All in favor of the consent agenda? Signal with the raise of your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Are there any items that any of the council members are opposed to? I would like the rector to reflect that I am in opposition to K. K as in Kappa, K, yes, I am against. Is there any items on the agenda any other council members are against on the consent agenda? There being none, we'll move forward to code enforcement hearings.
Item A on the agenda, Ho Mondone, 399 Main Street. That case has been resolved. Item B on the agenda, Ho Mondone, 210 Lemieux Street. That case has been resolved. Item C, William S. Hinton Estate, Zero Midway Street. This property is still in violation. That's it.
Did I blink?
He showed the pictures, yes.
I did blink.
Okay.
Is there anybody here to speak on behalf of William S. Hinton, the estate, or Zero Midway Street? There being none, this hearing is closed.
Item, item D, Jimmy E. Manning Estate, care of Suzanne Baker Steel. This property is still in violation. Uh, McDonald.
Now, Mr. Creel, Suzanne Baker Steel is a local attorney here with an office on Lemieux Street. Have we heard from her or anybody else from the estate?
The, um, the, uh, notices that we sent were signed, the certified notices that we sent.
Okay. Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of Jimmy E. Manning's estate or on behalf of Suzanne Baker Steel or Zero McDonald Avenue? There being none, this hearing is closed.
Item E, Ry Van Nguyen Estate, 234 Lee Street. This property is still in violation.
Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of Ry Van Nguyen, the estate of Ry Van Nguyen, or 234 Lee Street? There being none, this hearing is closed.
Item F, Tangi East LLC, care of Robert Bruno, 921 Cedar Lake Road. This property is still in violation.
Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of Tangi East LLC or Robert Bruno or 921 Cedar Lake Road? There being none, this hearing is closed. Thank you, Mr. Creel. This will bring us to the routine agenda. Do I have a motion on the routine agenda?
So moved.
I have a motion by, by Paul Tisdale and a second by George Lawrence. Discussion, Mr. Tisdale?
None.
Discussion, Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah, we'd, uh, we got an update, Walt. Anything we, uh, getting a little better, getting more money in?
Yes, sir. We have 712.5,000, uh, coming in from Mema. We should have it here in the next 10 days.
So, we'll have that pretty quick.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Lawrence? Does anybody else on the council have any discussion for the routine agenda? There being none, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
A motion to adjourn by George Lawrence.
Need-
Uh, do we have to vote on it?
You did.
Motion, uh, call for the question on the routine agenda. All in favor? That motion carries unanimously. I will reaffirm my-
I'll still move.
Request for a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
I got a motion to adjourn by George Lawrence and a second by Paul Tisdale. All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. We are in adjournment.